I talked to someone in Chester who's gonna try and help get that.
I think we can get a lot of grant money. Yeah, there's one out there, I might go use it. We don't get it. So you have to pay for a lot of money.
You know.
That would be nice though.
I spend my classes over at school.
Yeah. Yeah, it's uh, it's gotten a little hot.
It's creepy now.
Maybe one week before a problem about uh, the roads.
Yeah, spring.
It's cold now.
Yeah, wait a second.
And then we come out. It's like all the way in spring.
Got a call to order now, can you?
It is uh, four thirty.
For meeting to order. So to the citizens to be like of the United States of America, to be developed for which experience, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Eadie?
Here.
Councilman Bill?
Here.
Supervisor Ron?
Here.
Councilman Brown?
Here.
Councilman Lutha?
Here.
First thing we'll do then is a resolution to approve payment of the claims. Does someone want to bring that to the floor? Ed, okay, in a second.
I will.
Doug, okay. The total of abstract twelve for the general fund, December twenty first, twenty twenty three is twenty six thousand, three hundred and sixty six dollars and seventy nine cents. The total of abstract twelve for the highway fund, December twenty first, twenty twenty three is seventy four thousand, four hundred and seventy two dollars and fifty six cents. A little over thirty eight thousand of that is for salt. And the total claims is one hundred thousand, eight hundred and thirty nine dollars and thirty five cents.
Say that again, please.
Hmm?
Would you say that again, that number?
The total?
Yeah.
One hundred thousand, eight thirty nine point three five.
Okay, thank you.
So any discussion on the bills? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next resolution that we have is to authorize the adoption of the twenty twenty three Warren County, New York Hazard Mitigation Plan update. That was something that I worked on during the year and big thick book, I'm sure you've seen the book and.
I don't remember seeing it.
No, I mean in your work.
Oh, at work, yeah, I've seen stuff like that before, yes.
Yeah, where they ask you all kind of questions, what areas of your town do you think you're gonna need the most help with, where you might be able to get some FEMA money. Well, we filled that all out and um, this resolution is just our board adopting the Hazard Mitigation Plan update, it's done every five years.
Mm-hmm.
So do we have someone wants to bring this to the floor? Ed, in a second. Charlie?
I, I heard somebody say.
It's Charlie.
Ed and Charlie.
Ed and Charlie.
So whereas the town of Thurmond recognizes the threat that natural hazards pose to people and property within Thurmond, and whereas the town of Thurmond has prepared a multi-hazard mitigation plan hereby known as the twenty twenty three Warren County Hazard Mitigation Plan in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand, and whereas the twenty twenty three Warren County Hazard Mitigation Plan identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risks to people and property in Thurmond from the impacts of future hazards and disasters, and whereas adoption by the town of Thurmond demonstrates their commitment to hazard mitigation and achieving the goals outlined in the twenty twenty three Warren County, New York Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Be it resolved by the town of Thurmond, New York, that the town of Thurmond adopts the twenty twenty three Warren County Hazard Mitigation Plan. This plan approved by the community may be edited or amended after submission for review, but will not require the community to re-adopt any further iterations. This only applies to this specific plan and does not resolve the community from updating the plan in five years. And after this is adopted and we receive the book, if you want to see the paper, we'll have a little chapter and I can print that out if you all wanna look at what it is. Is there any other discussion on that?
What's the deadline to approve this?
They want it by the end of the year.
The reason I ask is I haven't reviewed it, so I kinda feel like I'm being asked to approve something I haven't reviewed.
So why?
So, I mean, I, I will abstain tonight, if you guys wanna vote on it, go ahead, but you can table it if you have time to do that, but if you don't, I'm just gonna abstain. I have no doubt you did a fine job putting it together and answering the question, but I just haven't reviewed it and I'm not comfortable approving something I haven't reviewed.
I can provide you with my notes after the meeting, but as far as the formal written document, I don't have that yet. They've taken what we did in all of our meetings and created this really huge book.
So they're asking us to approve something none of us have seen? I mean, you've answered the questions.
I've answered the questions and gone back and forth.
Right, but the actual, what they did compiling all that information and putting the report together.
I have not seen the.
We haven't seen it and they're asking us to, I mean, I, I suspect this is what they do all the time, but it's kinda not the way I do visits. I, I mean, if I'm gonna approve something, I like to review it first.
There's forty seven pages for the town of Thurmond on Hazard Mitigation on Warren County, let's say. For Thurmond itself, not the.
Are you talking to the forty seven pages that are contained in this report?
In that reporter, yeah.
Okay, well, I didn't know until the meeting tonight that we were gonna be doing this, I mean, so. I'll, I'll just abstain, abstain.
Okay. Does anybody else have a discussion? Do you wanna wait or no? I mean, I can go get the book and show you what last, the last one looked like, it's pretty similar. It has roads like Depickill, the Culver, um, areas where there could be a flood, and that's that stuff. Um, they want it by the end of the year.
I mean, I, I also make note of the fact that we can modify it later on if there's some issues with it, so.
Yeah. I think it's available, I mean, for anybody to see.
Yeah.
Let me just see if I have the email from him with me here.
Pretty lengthy.
That's okay, I mean, we don't have time to sit.
Pretty lengthy, but.
What's that?
Doc, report, pretty lengthy, a lot of paintings.
Yeah, forty seven.
Yep.
Yeah.
Says that we need to install a kitchen, is there something wrong with this kitchen?
We need to what?
Install a new kitchen?
Here?
I believe you wrote it.
No, nothing about installing a new kitchen.
Page thirty six.
No, we don't need a new kitchen. I'll have to look into that, that, I don't, I don't need a new kitchen.
It's under shelter.
Hmm?
It's under shelter, it says we need heating, cooling, and an installation of a kitchen.
Is that maybe?
In our town hall?
In your town?
Is that because they identify this as an emergency uh, shelter?
Oh, if we wanted to have a shelter.
If we wanted a shelter, yeah.
That's why we have a kitchen.
Yeah.
But if we wanted a shelter, it's not used to be a shelter.
Yeah, if we wanted to, but showers, showers are probably on it too.
Right. Yeah.
And heating and cooling, if you wanna have a cooling place.
Do we have any, do we have a warming center here?
Other than to come here during the day.
Every other town has a warming center when it hits below twenty for anybody that has power outages, everybody but the town of Thurmond.
Yeah, well, I know the fire department wants to have one, they were talking about doing that to get grant money for it.
You know, we got, I mean, somebody's just getting warm and they have no power in their house all night long, why isn't town hall open for the warming center?
We have nowhere for them to sleep.
Would you rather sleep in the house that had absolutely no heat or sit in a chair?
Well, they're definitely free to come, they're definitely free to come here. Keith?
Um, sounds like you're the only one that has a view of this report. I would suggest, say, a week to review it and the boards to get back together again and vote on it or whatever. If, if you didn't wanna go a week, well, it would be a week by the time you got to do it again, but sometime next week.
It's available online, anyone can read.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that it sounds like you're the only one who really looked at it.
Brian, Eddie.
Brian's not on the board, Brian's not voting.
No, I also said.
Brian, members of the public, he mentioned.
We've been discussing this for a while, it also said it may be edited or amended anytime after finishing.
Yeah, right. And I can't get me my notes, that's all I have, I don't have a final copy. All I have are the notes that we took and submitted, and then at the county level, they created this.
I'm just offering the suggestion to members of the public.
Are you guys okay with voting, or do you wanna wait, or do you wanna do?
We can vote.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay to vote. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'd stay.
Next resolution that I have is to approve the following budget adjustments, whereas it is necessary for. Somebody wanna bring this to the floor?
I will.
Doug, in a second. Charlie? Whereas it is necessary for the town of Thurmond to adjust the twenty twenty three budget for the following account codes to prevent negative expenditure accounts, be it resolved, the town account board proves the budget adjustments listed below. Okay, the first one is tax collector contractual. Um, she was in need of additional postage to mail out the tax bills, and so I'm increasing our property tax interest and penalties. That was raised throughout the year after last year's taxes, we had some extra money there, so I'm using that to offset it. The code enforcer salary is up four hundred and fifty dollars, I increased interest and earnings to cover that. The refuge and garbage contractual is a thousand dollars over, I'm using interest and earnings to cover that on here. The AM related payment that you see there, it was listed under code two seven five zero. The controller preferred it to be under three zero zero one, so I'm just moving it from one code to the other, there's no negative or anything. I'm just changing the code for the revenue. The justices equipment, um, that needs to increase eight hundred dollars to cover court clerk, personal services, she was eight hundred dollars over budget. Cemetery's contractual, that's being increased eight hundred and fifty, coming from cemetery's salary, eight hundred and fifty. Um, for the highway equipment and capital outlay, that was forty three thousand, zero one four. And that I am taking from five one three zero machinery contractual. It's just flipping the code actually on that. And then I'm taking from Russian weeds contractual to cover the machinery contractual deficit there. And state retirement, there was extra there that I'm using to cover the machinery contractual on that end. So if you want, you have your financials in here and if you want to look at it from that point of view. You can see, five one three oh point two is your repair code, right?
Yes.
So. It was budgeted for a hundred thousand, we are now at a hundred and forty nine thousand, so that's why I needed to move that nineteen sixteen to. Do you have any discussion on it?
Brian has a question.
You were just telling us, like, the justice equipment in the cemetery, that it increased eight hundred and eight fifty?
Uh, let me just get to where you're at, one 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 oh two.
Right above the capital.
I'm taking from the justice equipment because they didn't use any of that and putting it in to the salary part, that's over by eight hundred.
Yeah, one says increase, one says decrease, but I believe when you're saying that you said eight hundred dollar increase in justice equipment.
Oh, I'm increasing the court clerk side. And I gave a little extra because this report only goes through the end of November, so I have another month of payments for December, that's why I made it eight hundred. Any other questions, anybody? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 And then the rest of the information in here is basically discussion. And we put a copy of the State of Emergency Proclamation for Warren County and a local emergency order in here, which will be in effect until at least January seventeenth. I also provided the GA goal input proposal, but it's also the actual invoice for the furnace, eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And there's the appendix A section here, this is talking about the hazard mitigation, and I can get you that after the meeting even, I can show you my notes, or I'll just, I'll just scan it and provide it to you if that's what you want.
However, yeah, I mean, if Brian seems to think it's already posted, I don't.
Yeah.
It's posted.
The website, Cynthia this morning when I asked about.
If it's posted, then I can.
Yes, it's posted.
Okay.
Um, behind that is the new cost estimate I just received for the closing of the C and D. I put the draft that we had last year in here for reference, and then right behind it, you'll see it went up from seven hundred and eighty six thousand to nine hundred and fifty three thousand. I don't know if this is gonna change my financial obligation, the fifty thousand a year, because that was something I signed last year and I let them know that I'm right on target with that.
Yeah.
I don't think it should change that. I mean, I, I just received this like two days ago, so. Looks like they really increased the stormwater cost from ten to fifty thousand, and they added the gas tanks for fifty thousand, that's a hundred of it right there. They're speeding up a little bit, and then the contingency, they always add a little bit extra just in case, went from sixty nine to eighty two. And then I have the email there where they're coming in to look at the setbacks and think about where the well and septic field should be for the highway garage.
Um, since now we're being recorded here and just for the public, could we kind of tell them what the status is of the highway garage, where things stand?
Yeah, sure.
So they understand.
Mm-hmm. There's, they're getting ready to prepare a more formal plan for us, and I have with me here the original one that we all viewed last year. And they came in the other day with a revised plan that we may wanna look at. They only gave me one, because this is preliminary.
Generally speaking, what modifications have they made?
What they've done is, um, this mezzanine, which was the second floor of this area, they took that off, and.
Just as a cost saving, saving measure?
Yeah, oh yeah, cost saving measures all of it, yeah. And then here where they had this full length for the equipment to be, they've taken, eliminated that completely, and they said that we can build this ourselves after the fact.
That's just a polearm structure, okay, yep.
Like a polearm, yeah, mm-hmm, yeah. And so they're working on this section right now. They just decided on, I think it was yesterday, right, that they can't, they can't put a beam here.
They can't put a core, run a core raft in on our road.
They're gonna need to put like peters or posts or something to hold it up, but it'll be wide enough for the trucks to fit.
And it's still gonna be drive-through.
It's still gonna be drive-through, yeah, and, but instead of a steel building, they said that costs a lot more and takes longer to get, they're suggesting concrete. They're in the process of building something just like this in another town, and after January eleventh, they would be able to give me a more clear-cut cost.
Okay, so are they proceeding with actual plans for the building, or are we talking, they're just doing preliminary?
Preliminary right now, they're, they're doing preliminary, yeah.
Okay.
Just to try to save us some money and make sure that we have the right setbacks and, yeah.
Okay. Um, I'd just like to request that if there are any future meetings on this, I, I would like to be involved in this, so, yeah, just let me know on there.
Sure. Sure. Did you wanna see it?
I would've seen it.
Oh, you already saw it, okay. So this is what they're doing. Oh, did I show you this over here or no? They're taking this part, which was the second floor here, off, and then instead of having this, the full length, it's just right here like this. And instead of being steel, it'll be concrete, and that should save us some money. And I'll leave these out, if you wanna look at them after the meeting, I'll put it on the menu on the counter if you wanna see it.
Is there any projected cost of, 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 then a million dollars, is it?
Well. Three forty, three forty two. But that's what they're trying to reduce, but.
At one point, they had mentioned some potential grants through, um, one of the state agencies.
USDA.
Uh, that was one, but then there was another one through, I can't remember. It's not coming to me, like Urban Development or something like that, I can't remember what it was, uh, I can't think of the name. Have we done anything to look into those yet, or have they done anything for us?
Um, they're gonna come up with a list of, of agencies that are doing grants, and they did say though, for the USDA, that it takes a long time to do.
Should be.
But the other ones would be.
Have, have we talked to them at all about hiring a grant writer to, to apply for some of these?
I talked to someone who does grant writing yesterday and asked if they would be willing to help us, yeah.
Okay, for pay or volunteer?
Hopefully, volunteer, but possibly volunteer, yeah, possibly. Cause she's done it a lot, you know, she's done grants, grant writing.
They started to help, too.
Yeah.
They started to help.
Do we need, do we need to do anything to, um, authorize them to start applying for grants on our behalf, or do we have to get more planning done, I suppose?
I'd rather know the exact, after January eleventh, I'll know exactly what the options would be as far as money-wise.
It seems to me one of the grants they were talking about was to fund the planning aspect of the project, so.
Oh, yeah, mm-hmm. Well, that is one thing they said, some of the grants that you get are specific, like just for the planning and the engineering part of it,
Right.
and maybe just for the heating system, but, so we could be piecemealing that.
Okay, um, also, is there any potential to reach out to Dan Speck and Matt Simpson and see if they have anything? I don't know if they s, I, I don't think they still do member items, but.
They brought that, they brought that.
Matt Simpson would probably be a good one.
Yeah, I would reach out to both of them, yeah.
They, they talked about that, they're good, they're money out there.
I think John Alexander, right, he works for them.
Yeah. I mean, if, if we need to meet with either Dan or Matt, I know both of them, I'd be happy to meet with them and help facilitate that.
Okay, good. All right. And let's see, the next thing I have is the senior transportation program is now open, in your packet there's a flyer. Cynthia, I gave you a flyer, put on the webpage and go hang it up. And it starts January second for Thurmond, they'll pick up Thurmond and Stony Creek residents who are sixty years of age or over, or a military veteran of any age, it's the second and fourth Thursday of the month. On the first shuttle trip, you fill out a one-time registration form, that's the last time you have to do that, and the number to call is five one eight, seven six one, six three four seven to schedule a pickup. They're also looking for drivers, and there's a website, warrencountynewyork.gov/jobs, if you wanna apply to be a driver. So we're gonna put this information out there. Also in your packet, this paper that looks like this, showing that all the A U Bs are done and closed off, and we're closed out all the way till this year, so find it on the.
Thank you.
Like, put that ad in now, right? Yes, you can.
Okay, good, I'll do it right away.
That, that is a new project, and you should be commended for getting that done, but thank you.
Well, I, I needed that in order to move ahead with any kind of funding.
I think we should give her a hand.
Uh, she should get a hand, yeah.
Oh, it's a big job.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Well, that brings me to the next important bit of information that I have here. We've been accepted by Trusco Bank if we'd like to switch our banks. I did get a, information from TD Bank that our fees are going up. They charge us, as you probably know, they analyze our statement every month for how many deposits, how many checks and all that, and based on our balance in our bank account, that decides how much we have to pay. Usually we only need to have about seven hundred thousand in our bank account to avoid any kind of fees. At Trusco Bank, there are no fees. So I'm in favor of moving our money over to Trusco, which is right over by the price shopper.
Will, will they provide all the services that we need, like deposit of pay, check images and all those things?
Yeah. I wrote to her about the check images and she's looking into it, they will definitely be available to us online. Now, but the way I print our statements now, I go online and print the statement and I get the checks with the statement, instead of having to do individually one check at a time. So I wanna see that they can do that, I don't see why they couldn't.
Right.
I mean, that's pretty, you know.
Pretty standard for banks.
Pretty standard, yeah, to get, at least to get it online, you know, and I told her, I don't need paper boxes, I don't need them mailed to me, I have no problem pulling them off the internet. But I'm still waiting here, we were gonna have a meeting this week, but she was set, so we'll be meeting next week to finalize if it's okay with all of you.
Sure.
Okay. All right, let me see what else I have on here. Told you about to see the, oh, and their fee for all this site planning and figuring out where the well and septic should be. They say it won't exceed five thousand dollars, and I believe we have about nineteen thousand left in there, so we're good there.
Um, you mentioned using some of the ARPA money for the well and septic. What is the deadline that we have to use the ARPA money by?
I think it's twenty twenty five.
Okay.
I'll check on the exact date.
So I think we have a lot more ARPA money than what we're gonna need for the.
I think so too.
So we need to figure out what else we're gonna do, and at one time, I had proposed that we use it to extend broadband service to the roads that didn't get picked up with SLIT when it came through.
Yeah.
And I remember talking to them and they told us to hold off because there was stuff coming down from the federal and state government, the other funding and stuff like that. Um, maybe we should revisit that because I don't wanna wait till the last minute and then lose that money.
Oh, we're not gonna lose it, we're gonna spend it on something.
But I think we need, we may need to do some planning and it may take some time to get a project in motion so we can actually spend it. If, if we wait until, you know, the, close to the deadline, we don't have anything in the works, we might, they might take it back, and I, I don't wanna see that happen.
At my last county meeting, we discussed the broadband and the cell situation up here.
Okay.
There were some serious issues with people's health, the fact that Frontier phones in Stony Creek didn't work at all, the whole town was down for two weeks, and, um, someone else relied on someone in Stony Creek for their healthcare here in Thurmond, and they couldn't get through to them for almost two weeks. So when I went to the county and the other towns involved talked about this and said, this is really serious, I talked to a registered nurse, um, she is getting. I talked to a registered nurse, um, she is getting me information on patients who've had problems based upon cell phone and internet usage, lacking it. One of them was hooked up to a heart monitor machine, because they didn't have sufficient internet, the doctor couldn't get adequate readings and discharged him. I mean, it's serious that we don't have cell phone and internet all everywhere here. So they are going to putting, put more pressure on that problem.
I I forgot the name of the guy who's like um, Kevin Lynch.
Jeff? Oh.
He's the, I I don't know if he's like the CEO of 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 SLI, but he's the one that I had talked to before.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if you wanna reach out to him and or if you want me to do it, I I don't mind it, whatever you wanna do.
Well, I'll be talking to them, uh, cause one of the other things I was gonna discuss is, remember we had said we were gonna switch to SLI phones here? That's happening in January, we already have our phones, we're dealing with someone named Jeff and he's gonna be coming in here. We're gonna be going back to the individual phone lines. Because the problem we're having here is when you're dealing with the retirement system or the comptroller's office or New York class. When you need to get verification codes to enter into your computer, they can't come into a phone with an extension.
Oh, okay.
So we're gonna go to regular lines, single lines for each office.
So it sounds like the person you're talking about is a tech that's gonna come here.
I guess so, yeah.
As far as planning in a big project, I think you wanna speak to Kevin.
That's fine.
Because he's he's the guy that's kind of the CEO in charge of all that.
Okay.
He's the guy that coordinates the whole big picture.
Okay, good.
Yeah, his name's Kevin Lynch.
Mm-hmm, I got it. Okay, um, next thing I wanna let you know is we do it now have heat in the youth building. This past week she had Christmas up there, she had the tree up at the bandstand and and they had a great time. And so now she can utilize that building and try to find out how we can maybe get water at least in the summer up there. And they're also taking the two propane tanks from the Harris house, they have sixty percent propane in each one of those tanks. They're gonna be taking them away, we're getting a credit for all of that propane and that will go against what it costs us to fill the tanks up there. And there are two tanks up there now.
I saw where she's working on getting the uh, skating rink set up too.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be, the um, youth is really moving ahead.
Yep.
Um, the other thing is as far as our organizational meeting, I'd like to plan that for January fourth, which is the first Thursday. It has to be done by the fifth, so. At that time, we'll have abstract thirteen, which would be our final bills for twenty twenty-three. And then our first meeting will be on the eighteenth. And if it's okay with you, I'd like to have the audit, cause that needs to be done by the twentieth, so. We could do both at the one time, I think we did it that way last year.
Yeah, where the fourth?
Fourth is the organizational meeting?
Fourth day, fourth day.
Yeah, if you want.
What time do you have to organize?
It's four thirty, what, for you?
Okay, organizational, uh, for, uh, January fourth at four thirty?
Yeah. And we'll do abstract thirteen that day too, so we can get the bills out. And then the other meeting will be on the eighteenth at four thirty. And that's all I have, so if any of you have any other discussions or things you wanna bring up? Any questions?
Yeah, uh, we submit a grant for Vipicale culvert this year, twenty-fourth.
So bidding for a grant for, to have it replaced?
We need to do something, man.
That's on your list, isn't it, Vipicale culvert?
Those available is hazard mitigation, I'm hoping they just declared a state of emergency and we might be able to do something with hazard mitigation with FEMA.
I thought we were, didn't we have a grant to put a bridge in there instead of the culvert?
No, we applied for one, we applied and we didn't get it. And when it came up time for all those hazard mitigations, that's our most serious issue is that culvert. As far as the flooding goes and we've gotten FEMA money, what, three times already on that? So that was my argument, is FEMA's already paid us three times for this, it would would be good to get a grant and just get it done so it doesn't keep happening.
If you don't apply yearly, you're never gonna get one. I said if you don't apply yearly for the grant, you'll never get one.
Right.
So when you applied, we were actually rejected for the grant?
Yes, well, we weren't rejected, they, I guess in a way we were rejected, they put the money somewhere else.
Okay, so they just funded it.
They denied us, yeah.
They 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 didn't actually come out, they didn't say why it was denied.
No, no, it was just, we weren't chosen.
Just weren't chosen, okay, yeah.
You see me predicting that, oh, what just happened?
I need a bridge.
You didn't need a bridge. I mean, if they hadn't took the culvert out again, the water was up over the road just like the last time it blew out. There's six, there's sixty foot of, the other end of the road, sixty foot of it's gone four foot deep. That leaves me no way to get in or out or anyone else of it.
My road's dead anyway, county park was too small.
You want everybody to use culvert, right?
But if mine blew out, which we did the last time, there's no possible way anybody can get out.
Then you visit.
Sad water the other end.
Down where they put that new bridge, that bridge that comes through the the home up there. That culvert, I mean Johnsburg has a culvert and it's it's undersized. It can't take that water and it starts there and comes over there and went right down to the bridge.
If it washed over, rolled out all the way to the new concrete and the bottom of the new bridges.
Right.
Just took it, extracted out. I mean, there's no way a vehicle can get in or out on either either end of it.
So they're trapped, in other words.
Either.
I'm on an island, is what it must.
In your experience, Pat, what would it cost to repair that?
The one on River Road, the probably more of that was was three hundred something thousand. And that's the same brook, so I assume it would be the same high water mark, the same size?
It's a lot, so it's not something we're gonna do without a grant?
Well, the first time we applied for the grant and that Cedar Wood even helped us with that, they had a whole thing written up for us. I think the cost was over six hundred thousand, right, and that was last year.
You can use CHIPS money toward bridge construction. Like if you decided like you wanna do enough paint in a certain area of the road for a decent shade, you could take all the CHIPS money. And maybe with some more money, put it in, cause we now get three hundred two thousand from CHIPS.
Yeah.
That's a good chunk out there right there. Then that's approved now for for CHIPS funds for bridges.
Mm-hmm.
Projects and all this.
Paying that ground.
Well, at least we have a matching grant, we'd be able to have a match, you know, with that kinda money.
Why does the county own a bridge on the Johnsburg again? We're responsible for the culverts.
Cause it's over twenty twenty-two feet or twenty-five feet?
Yeah, yeah.
If they're over twenty-two feet, the county has to.
The bridge. So if we put a bridge in, it's over twenty-two feet, it becomes county.
Now you're thinking there, yes.
That they'd have to pay for part of that, okay?
Yeah.
You get an engineer, I would say that we need a twenty-two foot bridge. And the county will cover it.
Yeah.
The bridge out was there was no bigger than going over the culverts on Patterson Brook, I mean, how does that figure in, there's gotta be twenty-two feet there somewhere, so. You can manipulate the number and go back, I know when the culverts washed out, there was a lot more than twenty-two feet inside and outside.
Yeah, they don't work, the culverts don't work, they kept everybody.
Looks like you got a lot of debris that's gonna come down that uh, River Road, there's what, eight or ten trees just this side of the culvert that they're gonna add up with the culverts.
We'll keep trying.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
If you get a grant writer, keep that in mind for a grant, that's what I read, if you don't apply every year, you're not gonna get one.
That covers everything I have, do you have anything else? Anything else, anybody? You too, man.
Did you guys vote?
No. No. You wipe out the water hole.
You too.
If we buy some.